Mike Wood is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance because he now knows all the words.
I do?
Yeah.
And you're seconding the National Anthem on this.
When did that happen?
Okay, so it is right at 6:30 and we're gonna open the Monday, March 7th, 2016 Selectmen's Meeting. If we can please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
So, do we have anyone here for public comment? Doesn't look it. And Mike, if you can approve the warrant.
Sure. Motion to approve payroll warrant number 16-37 in the amount of $143,741.75.
Second it? Anyone want to second it?
Oh, I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Unanimous?
Motion to approve deduction warrant number 16-35A in the amount of $28,239.66.
Anyone want to second it?
I'll second that.
And any further discussion? And all in favor?
Motion to approve bill warrant number 16-37 in the amount of $1,140,707.73.
Second it?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Well, I would have some discussion but Denise isn't here, so I just want to make sure that everything on, that's a big one, so.
Right.
But we can clarify with Denise later.
Yep, okay. So, and everyone in favor?
Yep.
Unanimous?
Alright, great, thank you. So we have appointments but there's no appointments today. And we're a little bit early, believe it or not, already. So we will skip down to votes of the board. And we have the minutes from the February 18th, 2016 meeting. So has everyone read them and?
Mr. Chairman, they look to be in order and I'll make a motion that we accept those minutes of February 18th.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Great, so we moved down the list here. We have to declare two pieces of highway equipment as surplus and eligible to be sold on the VIA of the municipal bid. I did talk to the highway foreman today because I wasn't sure what was going on. One of them in your packet you're gonna find is a lawnmower. He said it's been there for about five years. It hasn't run. It's basically just scrapped and he didn't have a value but he said that he didn't think it was worth much of anything. The second is the old town Bombardier sidewalk plow. And he felt it was probably somewhere around 4, 4,500. Again, the engine on it is a miscellaneous engine, hard to get parts, but it's worth trying to sell, I think, and he agreed. So if we declare it, we can, on that one, we could stipulate that we want to try and get some value out of that one.
Do they have another one?
They got a brand new one. So does someone want to make a motion on trying to put that on the, on a state bid list to be sold? Or however you want to work it?
I'll make a motion that we put both pieces of equipment, declare them surplus and to be sold via municipal bid.
Okay. Anyone have any other further discussion? Okay, the only thing I would say, if we can just add that it will be sold at the highest value we can get for them.
Where do those funds go once it's sold?
General fund. Back into the general fund, I'm 90% positive. Okay, so are we all in favor of that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, good, okay.
All set with that, alright, unanimous? Mr. Chair, there are two items tonight because we're way ahead of schedule because of an adjustment. There are two items that probably take, maybe need 10 or 15 minutes, so I would recommend that we take one of them now, sale of town land discussion.
Okay.
And then afterwards we can talk about remote participation policy.
Alright, so the sale of the town land, as we've discussed before, Cassandra and I met with Larry, I always say it wrong, Larry Monaco?
Morocco.
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 Okay, so we met with Larry and Larry did a little bit more work on valuation of the industrial land. And what Cassandra and I did is we actually sat down with the list and we came up with the list. Some of them weren't even worth offering them to the abuddies. They were all landmark residential pieces. So we ended up coming up with about five of them. They're on this list here. And we're gonna have Cassandra write a letter to the abuddies and we'll determine value on them. The first one is off of Main Street. It's a municipal piece. And we're owed 1,800 bucks, so what we need to do is, what do you guys want to try and just send a letter to the abudda and see what they'll pay us for it? Or do you want to send it with a, you know, a dollar amount? Or how do you want to go about it?
Ah, it's a good question.
I don't know if we can legally put a dollar amount on it because we're not supposed to, if you put a dollar amount, I believe you're supposed to now, it has to be a bid process, but I think if we offer it to them and let them make us an offer, you know, what they're willing to pay for it, it's more like a bid process then.
Yeah.
So we probably should determine what route we want to go with these landmark pieces when we write the letter.
Well, so there's two pieces. One of them is 6.95 acres. And it's one, two, three, four, five lots that-
No, I'm doing the residential ones right now.
Oh, okay.
We got the ones on off Main Street, King Street, Brown Island Road.
He has a different list.
Well, you have a, I'm responding to this.
I haven't seen that.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of that, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't have it with me.
Let me go to what I got.
Which is fine, I mean.
Alright, well, anyway, so the one on, the one on Brown Island Road-
Take a look at them.
We're gonna, this one here, we're gonna offer to the state. It's all in state land, so we're gonna offer that to the state.
Which one?
Brown Island Road.
Brown Island, yeah.
It's a landmark piece. We're gonna give it to the state, see if they give us any value. The town vacant land, it's gonna be, it's turtle.
Landlocked.
Right, so we're gonna offer to the conservation of them.
Alright.
Uptack Road, again, it's landlord, it's in the state forest, we're gonna give it to the state.
It's Uptack Street.
Uptack Street.
So that's going into-
These are the ones we can offer to the abuddies, these two, off Main Street and King Street. That's the value, 1,800 to 2,400. So do we just write them a letter these two and tell them, you know, it's landlocked land, are you interested in offering us money for it or whatever? I don't think we can put a dollar amount. I don't think we can.
So you ask them to bid on it?
Yeah, bid on.
Yeah.
If they're, they may not even be interested.
Right.
Okay?
Well, I mean, that's not insignificant in size either, even though it's landlocked. It's not like it's a small piece of land.
Right, right, right. But if someone had a house and they were trying to put an addition on, they needed a piece of land or something-
Or if they just wanted to expand their yard.
Right, exactly.
That's a sizable lot, if they're sitting behind them.
What about these?
I'm gonna, I'll go through all that right now with you.
Okay.
So how do you want it, let's start with these two here. Do we want these ones here?
Well, whatever the process is, I believe that we can send a letter off.
Alright, so we're gonna do the letter.
Say the letter. The town is interested in selling the property, would like to engage-
So we'll do the letter. Okay, the next piece is the eight, where are we, here, Salem Street, 894 Salem Street. The market analysis on that one. No, no, the market analysis was done and that is the old highway garage.
Mm-hmm.
Again, I think the right way to do this one is, is we really should just send a, put out the bid and let people bid on what they want to pay for it.
Right.
So we'll just put a bid out. We can do it on the state register and what have you. And what will happen is they'll come in and they'll bid and say, okay, and we give lot page a number and they'll come in and say, okay, I'm willing to pay you for this. So some guy might come in and say, it's more valued than him, he'll pay more.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then the last piece is on Salem Street and Uptack Road, that's that, that Joe's talking about. There's like five pieces that make up one piece.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
The big piece.
Yeah.
And again, we should do the same thing with that one.
Yeah, because that one there, that one there's 6.95 acres.
Right.
And they can be transferred collectively as one.
Right.
They got, they, just so the public knows what we're talking about, they got 434 feet of road frontage.
The one on Salem Street has road frontage but you can't, only 50 feet of it is accessible to get into that parcel. So that's why we're combining the five to make one parcel because I don't think it-
No, it makes sense. And what's really interesting too is it's mixed commercial and residential, so that makes it more valuable because there's flexibility in how you can-
Right. And if we sell these, number one, we get money. Number two, they go back under the tax rules, so we get money there.
We get property type.
So it's a win-win, I think.
Yeah.
And the old highway garage, I feel that that one has, definitely has road frontage. It's definitely a better piece and I think that one will come in a little bit higher than, you know, higher value-wise because it's such a valuable piece.
When you put it out, do you want to put a minimum on it?
I don't think so. I don't think we legally can.
You can not accept the bids.
Yeah, we can definitely not accept the bids. If they come into our, we don't have to accept them. I'm just worried that, I guess if Denise was here, she knows the legal end of it better, but I don't believe we can put a dollar amount on them.
I have no, I have no experience in selling municipal property, so I think what we can tell Cassandra to record for the minutes here is that clearly there's consensus for us to move forward. Now we just need advice on how to technically do that.
That's good.
Alright, I don't, I mean, might I, I think we're all kind of in agreement that that's what we want to do.
So do you think we need to think of-
If we can sell this, these properties, we want to sell them, right?
Right. So do you think we should take a vote on it to?
Want to vote, that's fine.
I just know it's edged in stone, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright, so does someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to move it forward?
Yeah, on the industrial pieces.
Yeah, on the two, we probably ought to mention the-
Residential two.
The lot numbers here, map 48, you want to do the first one? Map 48, lots nine, 10, 14, 15, and 16?
You got it.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a good idea. You want to, you want to put the, you want to do two different motions?
Right.
And take the parcels separately?
Okay.
We'll vote on them separately.
Alright, so that one there, so Ed made the motion and we're gonna, we made the motion as to be advertised, to be bid on.
Yes.
To be bid on. So we got the motion, does someone want to second it? Michael second it?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, alright, so now we'll have to do the second one. This is all set.
Go ahead.
The second one is gonna be Salem Street, map 41, lot 55. And that is gonna be the old highway garage piece. And again, someone want to make a motion?
Go ahead, Ed, give it a try.
I'll make a motion that we, we put out to bid a parcel of land identified as map 41, lot 55, consisting of 3.9 acres. Put it out to bid for sale.
Okay, any further discussion? And all in favor?
We have a second, did we get a second?
I'll second it.
Second it, and then any further discussion? And all in favor? Okay. And on that Salem Street property, just for conversation for you guys to know, we divided the back piece off for the Bagnos School in case there was expansion, so we didn't sell that, but we divided the front piece off only. Alright, so now we probably should make a motion to decide on these other two, that we're gonna send a letter to the abuddies and just offer it for a dollar, you know, what they want to bid on it.
Mm-hmm.
And that's map two, lot 12, off Main Street. And again, map 26, lot 29A, King Street. So if someone wants to make a motion?
Where's it, map two, lot 12, and?
And then map 26, lot 29A.
I'll make a motion to send a letter to the abuddies for map two, lot 12, and map 26, lot 29.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous?
Alright, so that took care of that. So maybe we can bring some money and get them, some money in the coffers and then get some stuff back in the car. Alright, so we took care of that. Maybe, I think we're gonna be ready to go here with these guys, so we did this, we did the land, so that's done.
We could still squeeze in that.
You want to do the other one? Go ahead.
Which one?
Remote participation.
Oh, yes, you want me to start that off?
Yeah.
So for remote participation, for those of us that are not always in town and able to make some of the meetings, being able to dial remotely would allow me to be able to be at every meeting rather than just the ones that I'm typically in town for, which has been better lately, but even the last couple of ones I've had to miss because I've been in California or some other place, so. The technology's available, it's really easy. As long as someone has a laptop here, I can dial in and participate in the meetings and vote.
Well, Mike, I think that's a great idea.
There is an example that, of the town of Tewksbury.
The open meeting law does allow for us to be able to bring in or create a quorum with at least one member remotely through Skype or even a cellphone, a regular phone, so I think it's a great idea. So, does anybody know, Bill, do you know if Denise pulled a policy from another town?
Well, there's one here for the town of Tewksbury.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright.
Well, they have a couple of different reasons. It could be anything, but then it has approved technology, video conferencing, telephone, internet, whatever.
Good, I think it's a great idea.
But Skype or FaceTime is easy enough, as long as someone, there's a laptop here that you can interact with.
And the reasons for remote participation, I'll read this out so the public can understand it, personal illness, personal disability, emergency, military service, and geographic distance. So if you're on a business trip and you'd like to participate in the meeting, we need to fulfill quorum or, I think it's great. What's approved for technology for participation is telephone, internet, or satellite-enabled audio or video conferencing. Any other technology that enables the remote participant and all persons present at the meeting location to be clearly audible to one another. When video technology is in use, the remote participant shall be clearly visible to all persons present in the meeting location. So you can't do it in your pajamas.
No, that's alright. I wouldn't do that anyways.
Who would know if we're here and he's there?
But what I could do is-
That's a great idea.
I mean, I could drop my laptop off, turn it around, and then from my work computer wherever I am, I could dial into that and then-
So-
Cassandra, you're on TV.
Denise wanted me to let you know that a policy is not necessary for this to be in place, but you can just accept what it says in the open meeting law.
Yeah, I noticed that-
It's not a required policy that we need to have.
Just vote that the board agrees that that's a functionality that we can maintain.
Yes.
Yeah, Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, MGL 3820D. Alright, so I'll make a motion, I get it, that's-
Hold on, Joe, before, I guess it doesn't matter, but Dan had called me and was wondering if we could hold this off until he was there? Because he doesn't think it's, he wasn't gonna be here and he's saying that, you know, he'd like to weigh in on it. I don't know. I don't know what, you know, what Ed, I don't know.
You know, this is something that's important, it's a move forward and I think the whole board should participate in that discussion.
So you're saying you'd like to have Dan participate before we make a decision?
I would like to have a whole board here before we make a decision. We can talk about it, we talked about it, whatever, that's fine with me, but I know that, I don't know. I just think that we should have a-
Fine. I have a very strong tendency to make almost any decision with a full board. This is really important, but it's not an emergency.
Right, right.
So I think-
We've been living without it for almost a year.
So the consensus of the board is that we're going to table this until we have a full board.
Cassandra, so can we, I'm not gonna be here, I don't think, next meeting?
Okay.
Well, you have to be here for this.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so this is gonna have to be-
But if we implement it, you can be on Skype and-
He doesn't want to be here.
I'm just joking.
No, 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 but I can't, I can't, I'm marked.
I'm just joking.
One of the things that, in, looking in this policy here, is when video technology is in use, the remote participant shall be clearly visible to all persons present in the meeting location.
If you use video technology, but you can use a phone otherwise. If he's gonna use video-
What would happen if we had more than one person doing it?
You couldn't.
So you'd have to have a-
You'd have to physically have a majority here.
Majority here.
And then you could have one remote, I guess.
Alright, so what I would ask is-
It's not like it's gonna be used every meeting.
Right.
It's gonna be on one of the chances that myself or Dan or somebody else has to be somewhere around the country since I travel.
Well, Dan, one of Dan's reasonings behind this was Dan gets into tax season and I guess he wants to clarify because I think he plans on using it, so.
Yeah, and that's good, and we should encourage that.
He wanted, he wants to clarify how he wants to do it, I believe, so that's why I wanted to make sure.
Well, since the technology here is limited, like I said, there'd have to be a laptop where this is here, I turn it around, I dial into it.
Right.
So as long as there's another laptop that someone could put down at the end for Dan, or Dan has an extra laptop or whatever the case may be, or Denise has an extra one that we could use as a, as a bridge to doing that, then that, I don't care, that's fine.
But when are you coming back then? When will you be back, April?
I'll be here for the 28th meeting, and I don't know what the schedule looks like on that meeting.
28th is a special meeting.
Oh. So whenever we're all-
I mean, that conversation should be five minutes.
Right, exactly.
I think we're gonna go first week in April, still not a big deal.
Whenever, just write down, just make that note.
Yes.
Next full meeting we're here, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
And I think that I'm-
Yeah, you know, we can even bring it on almost any meeting because we can just bring it up at Old Business.
Yeah.
As Old Business.
Right, exactly, you're right, yep.
Alright, good.
Right, so if we're all here one meeting, remember, we'll just bring it up.
It's a good idea.
Alright, so now-
Well done.
We went through that. Okay. Looks like Chief Lay is here, I don't know if he's ready, but if you are, raise your hand and we're ready to have a conversation.
Alright, he's ready.
So whenever you're ready, we're gonna have the discussion on the proposed compensation charges.
Confiscation charges.
Changes. Changes. Changes, changes.
Is that wearing any glasses today?
No, not at all, I'm gonna put them back on now though.
You want those with me? Who do you want me?
At the podium if you can. At night, you can sit in front of us, however you want to do it.
No, I can go to the podium. One for me, one for each.
Thank you.
One for me.
Great, thanks.
Oh, yeah. We did plenty of time to test this stuff out. One of each, or each one?
One.
One? One, two, one, two, one, two, and then same thing.
You okay?
Same. Don't mix them up, or you'll be lost.
Okay.
Two pages.
Okay, two pages on this.
And two pages on this.
Two pages. Two pages on this.
Two pages. Two pages. Say one.
Page one, fire department compensation plan review, what I'd like you to look at. I made a couple of notations here. I'll take you through what this is and what this is all about and why I'm here. The current plan that we operate under has been in place since 2001. The current line item for wages, as you can see, is about $97,000. Back in 2001, when the plan was put in, the budget was 38. We added 20 that year to bring it to 58. So you can see what the differences were there. The call count last year, fiscal year, was 527. Back in the year, the compensation plan was, was put in, there were 335 calls. So you can see that the call count has gone up dramatically. Currently, the calls that we're responding to were up 10% year over year. And that's pretty, pretty consistent, month to month, we're experiencing a higher call rate. So what the current plan does is it pays a two-hour minimum when you get called. So from 11 o'clock at night, right through the night, and then all the next day, up until 5 o'clock in the evening, you get paid for two hours if you respond to a call, regardless of the length of the call. 10 minutes, 15 minutes. Average medical call is 20, 25 minutes, so we're paying two hours. I have talked to all the other chiefs in the area. Nobody else has this two-hour minimum during the day. A lot incent during the overnight. As you can imagine, 1, 2, 3 in the morning, it's hard to get people. So what I'm doing is I'm working with the other chiefs in the area to standardize our approach to how we incent and compensate call firefighters. On the union side, it's easier, it's all bargained for, but the call rate across communities is all over the place. We have one of the higher rates currently and then we double it during the day, okay? I hope to have a recommendation back in front of you folks well before July. It's just we're still doing some data analysis to be able to get the right read on this thing. We do think that the plan going forward ought to be more focused on training and certifications. So in other words, we have a base rate of $16 and change. We think that the more trained an individual is, both fire and EMS, the higher the rate should be. And that seems to be playing out. We've had a little bit of that in place over the years and that seems to be working, but we think we can do more with it. The review of compensation plans is long overdue. You should never have a compensation plan in place for more than six or seven years until you review it and do something with it. So this thing was a, we kind of set it and forget it for a long time. Currently, at the current run rate, I'm gonna run out of money. Okay, so what I'm looking for right now is a little bit of room between now and the end of the fiscal year to pull back on the two-hour minimum during the day and pay for some other things. I did run two sets of reports, okay? One is personnel averages by hour. So what this really shows you is that if you're on page one and you say, go to the bottom, and it says hour of the day, 11 a.m., if you're on the right one.
Yep.
The average number of people we put on a call during the day is 5.08. The only time we have any trouble getting people on a call is, as you can see, is 4 o'clock in the morning. 4 o'clock in the morning's a tough time for us, we only average four people. This, the whole year's worth of data, so it's pretty reliable to look at. So what this tells you is we really don't have a problem in any one time of the day. If you look at the second set of reports, which are incident totals by hour, you, and you just look at the graph is all you really need to look at, you will see that from pretty much 8 o'clock in the morning until 8 o'clock at night, that's, that's our volume of calls. That's where all the activity's taking place. It makes sense, that's when people are up and about. So, as I explained to Denise when I sent this email originally, I am not looking to, I give you a new plan tonight. I need time to, to work one out. I would, I would hope that I would get in front of you folks a number of times to talk about the design of it and what it would look like, okay? It's nothing, it's nothing difficult, I just want to do it right. Okay? So what I'm asking the board for is to allow me to suspend the two-hour minimum during the day for the next few months. The other thing that I gave you, if you were, if you were looking at it, is the hourly rates. I think it's important to recognize that there is no way to manage the number of people that respond. And if you look at some of those hourly rates, okay, and, you know, and I can get your average time on a call. Rarely are we anywhere more than an hour, rarely. So you can see that some of these are 45, 50, 55, $60 an hour.
I agree.
And I think it's a little rich, quite honestly, yes.
If you suspend the two-hour pay, two-hour minimum for the next couple of months, how are you going to pay the people that respond?
Pay them for one hour.
You pay them for one hour.
Everybody else, it's a good question. Everybody else, their pay is one hour. So if you go out at 8 o'clock at night for a 20-minute call, you get paid one hour. And it's interesting because the people that are really enjoying the current plan are the people that are around during the day. The original design was for someone working in town, say at Chesterton, and they needed to leave. And quite honestly, back in those days, they would get docked pay when they left. So we tried to make our pay higher than the job they were leaving. If you were a landscaper, you know, making, you know, decent wages, you know Bill pays well. If you were, you know, if you worked in town and you were around and you had to leave your job for less money, it wasn't working. And we experienced some of that. That no longer is the case. We've actually recruited a little better and we have people around. We actually have people around.
Well, I can say this, I agree with what you're trying to do. I don't have a problem with it because I sit home and I have a police radio, and again, you just said it. It's how do you determine when you have guys go to a call and you have six guys go to a car accident? And, you know, they all go to the station, they're gonna go to the car accident, and you got, and you got six guys and the squad, and then the ladder goes out and it's two hours each guy when they go. That gets very expensive, but how do you say to someone, hey, you just came down here, sit in the- That gets, that gets very expensive, but how do you say to someone, "Hey, you just came down here, sit in the garage and wait," or whatever? I, it's kind of a, it's kind of a situation where it's, how do you, uh, how do you draw the line? How do you find the fine line? And I agree what you're saying, we need to go to an hour for, for now, but, um, it's just the way the system's set up. It's set up the way it's set up, and it's been done so long that way, but, I mean, I've heard, I've heard five on, on, you know, on a squad, and two on an engine, there's seven guys sometimes, you know, and it's great, I'm not complaining at all, I'm not. And that's what they're there to do, but how do you, how do you say, "Don't come"? How do you say, you know, this is the whole thing, you know what I mean? How do you manage how many people go? It's not something you can do, I don't see how, I don't know, you help me with this, I mean...
It's, it's, this question's been asked, uh, many, many, many times. You know, the solution is to, is to staff, is to put people in the station and say, "You two guys handle everything during the day."
Right.
And if, if I need more. Uh, but the entry, the entry level, you know, wage line item is significant. I put two people in just during the day, paid them sixteen, seventeen dollars, and I'm looking at seventy-five grand. Just for that, that's nothing else, my whole account is ninety-six.
Right.
So I don't think there's an easy way to get at what you're asking. We, we did sign up with whoisresponding.com, it's an app on a smartphone. It gives us some intelligence around who's available and who might respond. But as soon as you start to say, you know, "For this type of a call, I'm only taking four."
Yeah.
Okay? You, you, you've created a race to the firehouse.
How many guys do you have at a ti- uh, on, on staff?
I don't have any on staff.
I mean, they're volunteers.
They're not volunteers, they're paid firefighters, they're call firefighters.
Forty, forty? So there's no way to put like a round robin in place where today it's these five that are top, and if we need more, we call more, or these five? There's not, have you thought about doing something like that?
Um, yes, and then as you sit down around a table and you think about it, you can't make it work. But you're gonna, so, it's, it's, it's my week, it's my day, or it's my week, so I have to stay in town, you gotta pay me. As soon as you start telling people, "You can't go anywhere because your group is on duty,"
Yeah.
you gotta pay them. A lot of communities do that. Okay? There's, there's a lot of ways to do this. I, what I will tell you, and I have another handout that I was going to give in a few minutes, we have the lowest budget in Essex County. It's not really broken, okay? You, you, you have a call fire department. Only place that's lower than us is Rockport, I don't know how they do it, but, not by a whole lot. Um, everybody else is, is, is well above where we are. Communities half our size are spending considerably more than we do.
Right. If, if, what you said is you're gonna suspend the two hours for now, uh, which is, it makes sense. Are you gonna get kicked back if this, uh, stayed on, the two hour, the one hour during the day stayed on for the remainder of whatever? Are you going back to the two hour during the day? Is this just for temporary, or are you gonna go...
Temporary, I, from what I've, from what I've already looked at, some of the work I've already done, I can't see anything that would push me back in the two-hour minimum during the day.
Okay.
I talked to Boxer, they pay double time at night.
And, and you're saying day, what's the day go again, eight, you said eight?
Well, probably eight.
So eight to what?
Five.
Eight to five.
Seven is a, is, is a tough time. Seven is one of those things, if you gotta be to work at eight-thirty,
Right.
and we gotta call at seven, it's decision time.
Right.
Everybody looks at the clock when the tone goes off, and determines what their action's going to be. Am I gonna be late for work? You know, do I, am I dropping my kids at school? Seven's a tricky one, so seven, we believe, um, requires a, a good incentive to get somebody to turn up. A lot of car accidents at seven. You know, people, people get up, get six, and at seven realize they're sick, and it's just an active time of the day, so...
Well, I, um, I, I would say we should, I will take your recommendation, I don't have a problem taking with it, and like you say, it sounds like you know what I'm, what I'm trying to explain, and you've been grappling on it as well, so...
It, uh, do you anticipate, uh, people not showing up because they, uh, they're not, not doing the double time?
If I anticipated that, I wouldn't do this.
So, i- if it's...
I, I don't anticipate, it, there's, there's a rule in compensation, and there's a good rule around incentives. Don't incent for what you're gonna get anyhow. Okay?
Well, i- if it's, uh, if they, uh, if it's in effect now for a few months, you can see if participation...
Well, I, I'm hoping three months will allow me to, to, to measure it. Here's, here's what I do know. If, if we think this through, and we, and we drive the rate up, instead of paying you sixteen, and you go get firefighter one, two, you go get EMT, and I pay you twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two? Okay? So if I pay you a little higher, this is a part-time job. Okay? This is a part-time job. You should not be fooled by anything else, other than it's a part-time job. But you need people to come out when you need them. Okay? Is there some waste sometimes, Bill? Yeah. But you gotta live with the waste, because you're getting way more than the, the next, you know, you're looking at three, four, five, six, eight hundred thousand dollars, you know? I think Rowley's number was eight hundred. I don't think either we are. Okay? So this model is, is, is still very viable here, it's working really well?
Well, I think like Ed said, I think that we should try it, and, uh, give it a, give it a period, and let you do your due diligence, and hopefully...
I'm sorry, and Ed, I, I didn't finish what I was, where I was going with that. So we increased the, the hourly wage, and a lot of these calls, guys go to two and three calls in a day inside of the same time period, which don't really make any difference. They, they, they get, they get the opportunity to earn. I want the firefighter to be incented to train, get certified, run his rate up, and then if they want to make more money, come to more calls. Okay? You don't mind, if a guy's coming out all day, I mean, some of these guys are under the day, are going three, four, five, six calls a day. They don't always get the two-hour minimum, sometimes they do. Is it terrible? No, but I'll tell you what, the guy that works all day, and he comes home and he's tired, and he goes out at seven, or eight, at nine at night, he's not getting juiced. Okay? He's getting straight time, so it's, it's a little, um, it's, it's not as fair as it could be, and I don't think the money's being applied properly.
Anyone else have any?
Uh, well, I appreciate it, um, you're gonna basically roll out a plan after the fiscal year starts?
Yeah.
In July?
Yeah.
Okay. So the budget that you presented is, is fine the way it is?
Calls are going up, I mean, I know...
Calls are going up anyways.
There's other, you know, I'm, I'm gonna trade some money around, uh, in the last few months here anyhow, I, I, I don't have enough training money.
Yeah.
But I knew, I knew that going in.
Off, just on, speaking of training, could you give us a little detail about the fine young men that completed training, um, recently?
Graduated?
Graduated.
Do that, are we shifting gears?
Could do that.
Let's stay, let's stay on task, okay? You know I'm gonna do that.
Yeah, okay, good.
And one of them here, so...
That's good.
Do we have to approve the plan?
Well, I mean, I, I was not able to attend, and I read about it, and people should know.
If Denise was here, she would tell you that this is one of those times where we, we work together on compensation. I don't do it alone, you don't do it alone. I make a recommendation, you guys say, "Yeah, it makes sense, we trust you, chief, you know what you're talking about." You don't have to say that part.
Yeah, I know, I can say it, I trust you, chief.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll listen to what you have to say. My question to you was, and I know this has been brought up before by some other selectmen, um, argument was that we're supposed to be setting the rate. Do we ever clarify that, who sets the rate for the fireman? Remember there was a big argument out there, so I just kinda wanna clear the air on that one?
I don't, I don't know the answer.
Okay.
I haven't, although I think there were some, I think there were some things that were said, perhaps when I wasn't here to set anybody straight. I haven't set any rates. These rates get increased two, two and a half percent a year. I've not touched any rates. I followed the plan that's in place from 2001, and when somebody gets five year, five more years of service, I give them another dollar. They go get a certi- they go get a certificate, I give them another dollar. So that's, all, all I've done is apply what's in place, I've done nothing else.
Or is they, they better themselves?
The other thing that was said is, I've not promoted anyone, I've not demoted anyone.
Or is they're better to them, they better themselves, they get more money?
Correct.
And it's the highway department.
Correct. And, and I think that's what, that's what we would want, and that's what the community would want.
I'm just trying to clear the air, that's all. Okay. So, does anyone have any, on this subject, any further? I am, I will say that I am in favor of dropping it to the one hour during the day, um, based on what the chief has presented to us, and we'll do it for the time the chief needs. Ed?
Do, do you wanna, you wanna put that in form of a motion, or do you think it needs it?
Um, I don't know, I, I, I probably, I think we, probably, probably, probably good idea to vote it.
The board, the board has, um, authority, and no other board does, to set salaries and rates and things, so we, we should vote on it.
Alright, so, so someone wanna make a motion to accept the, uh, the drop from a two-hour minimum call to a one-hour call during the day and the, the time that the chief had set forward?
Mike, you wanna venture a...
Yeah, I'll venture that.
Venture, um, motion?
Make a motion to accept, uh, the chief's recommendation to drop from a two-hour pay minimum to a one-hour pay minimum, uh, for the daytime hours, eight AM to five PM.
Correct. Until further notice, I think.
Until...
By the chief.
Further notice by the chief.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
May- maybe, uh, any of these firefighters wanna wait, wait another...
I guess, I mean, anyone have anything they wanna say?
Okay.
Alright, okay. Alright, so, um, no other discussion, in vote. All in favor?
Yep.
Okay. All set. Okay. So while you're standing there, do you wanna go to the next?
Yeah, well, well, I'll, we'll fit this other thing in here, because I think it's a great opportunity. I did forward the release to you.
Yeah, that's good.
Late in the day, came out late in the day. Uh, we tried to do it Friday, but we didn't have, uh, the photographs that we needed. Fortunately, Senator Tyre had one on his phone, so we worked it from him today, and we got something out. But the story, um, I don't know if you printed it or read it, but, um, we had six people in the class. That's a, that's a high for us. Last year, we had four. One ended up being called up for active duty, so we graduated three. Incredibly strong numbers, if you look across the county, and this is really an Essex County class. What I discovered, and what my recruits seem to like, is that when I host, it's easy to go. You know, because you gotta be there at six o'clock, you gotta be there at six-thirty, but let's face it, you gotta get out of work, you gotta travel somewhere. We have people in this classroom, um, I think Nahat, Westford, um, you know, commute, so I've removed the barrier to entry by hosting it. I believe that. And, uh, we pay for these people to go, we pay them a twenty-five hundred dollar stipend. So I get fifteen thousand dollars coming out of my current budget to pay the people that get certified. So Captain York is one of them, he's right here. Uh, he's been on the fire department for twenty-five years. And, uh, I don't wanna speak to him, but I think he, he, uh, got newfound firefighter religion, and has a real appreciation for what this is. And, uh, I think for us tenured folks that have been around, we, we see the, the younger folks come out of the academy, and, and realize the depth and the breadth of knowledge they have. All three of these gentlemen here, by the way, are firefighter one, two certified, so it's the future, it's in our training, uh, policy. Need to be certified. Okay? We have some tenured people that we've kinda grandfathered, they do a couple of things, they can, they can be good. But everybody else, when we, when we hire now, we require firefighter one, two within two years. Gotta do it. And that's the absolute value to us, is when somebody's trained at that level, and that's just the baseline. There's all kinds of stuff you add to that, but, you know, these, these, these guys to go through this class, four months, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday, uh, two-hundred-and-forty hours, no lot of work at home, study, study, study. Think they probably studied every day they weren't in class, but...
So is this...
It's cruel.
The program, this program, we've had the discussion, you and I before, where, um, there was a policy put in place by the fire department where if you didn't have certain training, you can't go into a burning building.
Correct.
So this, this is, this is part of the program we're talking about, you need to have this done, basically, to be...
We don't have to have this, we've, for people that have been around, um, and have sufficient evidence that they've completed the, the right number of courses and the right type of courses, get a little exposure to, uh, a burn building, and get some SCBA experience,
Yep.
then we will sign off and allow them to be interior firefighters. The job is way too dangerous, um, to not have a certain level of training. Back when I joined the fire department, back when, when, when Ed was on, um, it took twenty, twenty-five, thirty minutes for a fire to get to a, a full-grown stage. Okay? So you could light your sofa on fire, and twenty-five or thirty minutes before your living room's on fire. Today, that takes between three and five minutes. So fires burn hotter, and they burn faster, and it's a, and it's a much different game.
Right.
They're much more dangerous, the smoke will kill you today, give you can- cancer quicker than you can blink your eyes, so...
Right. And I appreciate that. What I'm trying to do is, I'm trying, again, I'm trying to clear the air, um, there's a policy in place, not this depth policy that we're talking about with these guys, but there's a policy in place where we need to have our firemen a certain amount of training to be able to go into a burn building, to do a burning building.
Correct.
That's in, that's in place. Okay?
And there's only a half a dozen of those. We're working with them to get...
And the policy's in place, they know about the policy, they know they can come, they can join it, et cetera, et cetera, it's all...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And there was, I would just tell you, because we gave till the end of the year.
Yep.
And, uh, currently, one of the classes they need at the academy is not being offered. We're working with the academy to get a special grow one day, 'cause I got a little juice down there now. And, uh, so if we don't get our own time, 'cause otherwise it's not offered till the fall, um, and there's the training captain right now, but he has, uh, come to me and said, "We get the mobile training unit coming up here, I think in May, and that's a trailer that they smoke up, and you train inside of that. If those folks that need the academy class can't get in till the fall, we put them in the trailer here, run, run them through three different scenarios, and we'll, we'll allow that to be good enough for six months, give them a checkmark, and allow them into a building." This is all about keeping them safe,
Yep.
and it's all about keeping the person they go in with safe.
Right.
Okay?
So there's no excuse, there's no excuse that...
None.
That we haven't pushed anyone aside, there's no excuses for, uh, you know, one of our guys can't go into a burning building if they won't, if they're willing to do this, they, they can, they can do what they gotta do. Alright, okay.
It's been a little follow-up, but change, you know...
Well, change is change, but I'm just, you know...
That's all.
Alright.
We need, we need to stay safe.
Okay.
That's what this is.
Well, I, we're on, we're on, you know, public ear, public eye here, so I wanna try and clear the air, that's all I'm trying to do.
Okay.
Alright, so...
Congratulations, and thank you.
Yes, congratulations. I did watch that on TV, it was quite a...
Oh, I didn't know it had been on yet, so, uh, yeah, good.
Quite a, quite an ordeal.
Good. The bagpipes, they never get old, when you're in this business, I'll tell you.
But no, it, I know it's a commitment, I know it's a big commitment, and, and the only other part to that was, I've said it before, nothing against, nothing against the fireman, but, you know, we spent quite a bit of money getting these guys through the course and what have you, but we get no, uh, we get no, um, how do I say it? Look, um, you know, they're not, no guarantee they're gonna stay with us.
No.
You know, we, we spend all the money, but hopefully, they, they, they're involved, and they stay, and what have you, you know? I know...
If you, if you hired them, they'd stay, but it's not, it's not where we're at. So, is there some churn? Yeah, there is in every organization, there's natural churn, you're gonna have that. We are, well, I've mentioned it before, we've really fine-tuned our recruit and our hire process. We really know who we're looking for. We know who sticks, and you know who, once you, once you find the right person, the people that really stick are the ones that are trained. Because the job means, the job is so much more when you know what you're doing, versus trying to hide in the shadows when you don't know what you're doing. Trust me. Job is very rewarding when you know what you're doing.
I can imagine. Does anyone else have anything to bob on the subject?
No.
Well, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, awesome, thank you, and again, thank you to the guys that went through the course, and congratulations to all of them.
Are we, are we going over my budget tonight?
Okay, alright. So if you wanna do that, we can do that next.
I have, I have stuff, so we can do that next.
Alright, so we did this, fire chief, okay.
Okay, good.
Are we, um, we're talking about... Everything you wanna talk about, that's what we're here for, trying to get it all out in the open, and...
I, I think it's a good idea to mention some capital,
Bill, where you're going?
what your capital requirements are, if you'd like, good idea.
I did have a, let me get back to the microphone, it might be heard. I, I did have a chance to talk with, uh, the chair, uh, last week about, about... I, I did have a chance to talk with, uh, the chair, uh, last week about, about a number of things. And, uh, I think we both arrived in a, in a place where we agreed that I could probably do a better job of communicating what's going on in the fire department to the board. Okay? So, there, there seems to be a lot of questions when I'm, when I'm not on the floor. And I, I don't think that's good, because I think it leads us in the direction of, you think you know what I'm doing, without knowing what I'm doing. So, one of the things I think we need to agree on is how frequently you'd like me here. Quite honestly, I think it, you know, I think I should be in here monthly and give you a 15-minute report, um, and, and what my performance is over the last 30 days against my budget. I mean, you know, I stand here and you say, so, how, how many guys do you have, again? Shouldn't be a question, right? How, how's this work, again? Shouldn't be a question. So, I guess I've not done a very good job of letting you know how it operates. And, and Mike, it wasn't, you know, the fact that you called them volunteers, it doesn't matter at the end of the day, because they're incredibly committed people, but they're paid call firefighters. So, I think those, some of the things are, are minor in nature, but understanding how this model operates, I think is incredibly important. So, you know, now I come in here with my budget, and this budget's been the same forever, since Eddie was on the board. Goes up a couple of percent every year, very rarely changes. And most things, you know, the equipment needs don't change, I, I maintain equipment. You know, there's certain things you do annually. Most of the stuff needs to be inspected, tested, certified annually. That's just ongoing. So, the only discretion inside of the entire budget for me, really, is equipment. So, I have equipment lists, I get them from the captains, always have them. And when I get to May and June, and I can see what my run rate is against my budget, I start to plan my purchases and we prioritize them. The list is way beyond what I'm funded for. And we, we need all that stuff. But we, we put off, we put off, and put off purchases. Okay? I need a thermal, I need, I need AED, the ones that got donated to us by Trinity, six months ago? Yeah, we lost one. Lost it on a call, a couple of thousand dollar worth of piece of equipment. Now, I got to go buy one. You, you never know, I got a $6,000 repair bill on the ladder, I'm waiting on it. If, you know, if, if the town decides they don't want to buy a new ladder truck, then I got to go out and get this one fixed. So, the discretionary spend inside of my budget is only really at the equipment level. You know, and things are, things are expensive. You know, a nozzle that you pay 28 bucks for at Home Depot, I pay, you know, $800 for. The technology, it's what it is. So, before, before we do this, because it just reminded me of something else, which was the, the radio thing, which is capital. I'm going to knock this one off, because I think it's easy. Because Eddie, Eddie was adding up numbers last time I was here. So, I want you to have just the actual word. And then I think FinCom was in here, and.
Great.
I think, if I heard the quote right, I didn't watch it, so I don't know. But somebody said.
Thank you.
Gee, this guy, he's like the high-cost chief now. So, all of a sudden, I'm the high-cost chief, because I tell you what my guys need to be safe. So, this is the portable radio quote. Dan asked if I could phase it in. And I told him, uh, no. And he said, so he can't buy a half a loaf of bread? And I said, no, you can't. So, I was incorrect. Okay? I went back to the, uh, back to the vendor, talked this through. This particular technology lets you, uh, either be analog or digital. So, here's the thing with this quote. We need them, we, they're incredibly important to what we do. It's about firefighter safety. This is all, you know, this is all a result of, of 9/11. And all the communication recommendations. So, here's where this one goes. You can buy all of it. You can buy some of it. You can buy one a year for the next 46 years, or you can buy none of it. So, I am not a high-cost chief, I am only the chief that's going to tell you what my firefighters need to be safe. So, I know you guys get fiscal issues, so you can take this and you can spend whatever amount you want.
Can I ask, I'm not going to interrupt, can I ask you a couple of questions? Number one, do you think the vehicles are in worse shape? Are the handheld radios the men, the men hold are in worse shape? Are they all?
Do you mean the vehicle radios?
The vehicle radios?
I, I think the portables is the single greatest need along the communication. Could I, could I come off the trucks? Sure.
So, you're saying that.
I could wait on the trucks.
So, you're saying that, that you feel that the worst, worst are the portables right now?
Yeah, and it's the greatest chance for things to go.
Okay.
Wrong.
Okay. And, um, base stations?
Those are. I'm, I'm not exactly, I don't want to misspeak on that, they're a thousand bucks a piece.
No, no, I'm saying, condition?
Oh.
Can they, can we, when I'm getting that, can we put them off a year? I mean.
I can put any, any of this off.
Right, but I'm, I'm asking you to tell me, I do not feel safe with the portables, I don't feel safe with the, with the, the trucks. I want you to tell me, prioritize to me what you think is the worst, worst, what, you know, what.
It's the portable.
Portables, okay.
Straight out, not the trucks, not the base stations. I don't think you have to buy the base stations to be able to use.
All right, without me, I haven't gone, you just gave this to me. Do you have a number on portable on the top of your head? What they came out to be roughly?
If you look at the first part of that, so it's 24, 17, 41, 45, I don't know. 50?
Oh, 50,000.
Round numbers?
Okay. Well, I mean, really, 50K and you're talking 80, so what do you, you know? All right.
Yeah, but you may, if you, you know, if you don't have it, you don't have it.
Right, but also, you got to keep the men safe.
Well, I re- I recognize that.
So, I'm not sitting here trying not to.
I cannot put them into a burning building.
What's that?
I could not put them into a burning building, I could not put them into a dangerous situation. That's what the radio's all about.
My other question is, did you only get one quote or did you get three quotes on this?
This is the lowest of many.
Lowest of many, okay.
And I'm, you always know you can get a little lower once I start to.
No, I'm not asking for junk.
Once I, no, 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 this isn't, once I start to push the competitive, uh, the competitors at one another, it's amazing what happens.
Is it, uh, is this on the state bid list?
Absolutely. Yeah. I, I could take one off the state bid list, it's, it's $40,000 more than this. Being on the state bid list doesn't mean it's the lowest number.
I've said that before.
Anyone, anyone else have anything?
A lot of negotiating going on here.
It's critical, it's important.
Mike, you all set? Okay. Ed, you all set?
You need to go there?
Yeah. Okay, well, you answered all my questions, I'm happy with it.
Yes.
We'll take it under advisement.
Yeah, so we have to prioritize. I'm going to get you an actual number, she's going to add it up, that's important.
It's 50-something.
And I'm doing the accessories, see what it belongs to there.
This, this first part is 50-something.
Huh?
It's 50-something.
Yeah, we're going to get an actual number.
Do you want, do you want five or something?
Because we need to recommend that.
Just, just a question, you, uh, the, the 46 portables, could, could you, could you explain the, could you explain that, uh, you don't have 46 for people?
You need one for each truck.
So, there's not a, there's only portables in the truck, or you have to have one in the truck just in case?
You need to have a portable, uh, in the truck.
In the truck.
Yeah. Eddie's thinking back to the day when he and I were on, there was, you know, who grabbed the portable before you left the barn? We had one.
No, I was just thinking that if, if each guy has a portable, uh, what's the rationale of the portable, uh, on, on the apparatus?
Well, um, it's very possible that that person shows up without their radio. That, that would be one, when the truck goes somewhere else.
56.
No, it's 52.
50. It's another layer of flexibility. Eliminate those 11?
So, we got 56,412. Sorry, Bob, I didn't mean to.
How much?
56,412. 56, comma, 412. That includes the portable accessories.
Okay, I didn't add that. And that's including the 11 that Ed was just talking about.
Yes. All right, so, to, to, you know what? To, to Eddie's point, 35 takes care of firefighters? You want to go to 35? Buy the others, buy the balance, at, at some other, at some other point? The other thing, and this is why I said if I come in and I get to talk about more things, it, it doesn't seem like we are clear on the capital plan. Okay? I came in a year ago and showed you a truck plan that reduced the size of the fleet, right? You're buying, you're buying radios in here for a truck I want to get rid of, you're going to buy air packs for a truck I want to get rid of, you, you maintain a truck I want to get rid of, you do all kinds of stuff for a truck I don't even need. Now, you have the updated list from me, I took all the truck needs, pumps, and pushed them out into after I'm out of here. Okay? Because you can wait and you can buy, but you run in two when you need one. Okay? It's important to understand that, because you're, you're equipping, you're going to continue to equip and maintain a truck you don't need.
So, if we're going to have this conversation, what would stop us from taking the one truck that we keep equipping for no reason at all? What would stop us from taking that out of service today if we don't need it?
Because, um, then the truck that you're left with is, here, here's the picture that I painted before. One's too big, one is too old. Okay? The one that's too old does not meet safety standards. Men shouldn't be riding in the back. We allow it, it's a risk, I think. Okay? The other one's too big. It's got 3,000 gallons of water on it. You can hear that thing coming around the corner, the, you know, rubber just coming off the tires, it's so heavy. Too big to run every day as a frontline engine. It's, it's not designed for that, it's a tanker. So, you need to take the old truck and the big truck, merge them together, get a new one that, that fits, um, today for us. And that, that was the plan, again, I pushed it out. So. Just recognize, every time I come in, when I need SCBA's or any radios, you're buying a little extra, because we're still a little trucking.
So, I mean, we're getting off the topic, and I don't mean to get off topic, but I'm going to ask a simple question.
Yep.
And just from me being living in Groveland, we get engine one in, in Central, when we get engine two in South Groveland, those are, I consider those are the two frontline trucks? Or no?
Correct.
Okay. So, they're the frontline trucks? And they look to me like they're in pretty good shape, maybe because I don't know what I'm talking about.
They are in good shape.
So, those two are, we're good with, were, those, we're good with them? Is that not one of the ones we're trying to downsize?
Engine two.
So, that truck.
The plan was to retire engine three, sell engine two, it's got some resale value, and buy a new engine two.
Okay. But what I'm getting at, the fiscal restraints we have on us right now.
I, I get it.
Can we get by with those two? Are they safe?
Absolutely, but I'm not taking engine three off the road.
Okay.
Okay? Because if, if I, as soon as I take engine three off the road, then I got to run engine two everywhere. It's too heavy to do that, it's too big.
Okay.
Can't get it everywhere. So, we're kind of stuck with what we have, which is why I put them out until I'm 66 years old.
Now, if we left, I mean, we're just getting nitty, nitty-picky, I'm not trying to do this, but if we left the, if we left used radios in the other apparatus that's not that important, will they work? With these radios?
Yes.
They will.
Yeah.
So, if need be, and we need to go back and streamline this to try and do this in maybe a two-year sprint, which may never happen the next year, like we always say, but I mean, we're either going to have to do one of two things, we're going to have to finance these things, because I can't see any money in the town of Groveland to buy these. I mean, we're going to, you know, financing them or whatever, that's what we're going to have a discussion about. And I say, if we're going to, like I said before, I was dead against the ladder truck, we don't want to have that issue, but we're going the route we're going. This, this issue here, if you're going to borrow 50 grand, or you're going to borrow 82, what makes sense? Go the whole route.
You know, we could be, we could be having this whole discussion, and then in August, I get a grant.
Right.
Because I did write a grant for this, radios are easy to get through the grant process.
Right.
The struggle that I have in writing the grant is making us look poor.
Well, I can help you do that.
No, I.
Don't worry, I'll help you do that.
Well, I, I, I've asked.
Some things we excel at.
No problem.
I've asked for help, haven't gotten any yet, although Deb Webster did, did.
Oh, you mean, Paul, with the house values and all that, you mean?
No, help like reading something, other than you say. It's easy, it's easy to say we don't have any money, but you have to prove you don't have any money.
Really?
Yeah, I know, it's crazy, huh?
I can help you with the, the school budget alone, we can start with that.
Well, I told, I told him that what percent of our overall budget was.
65%, I think this year.
You know, I whine about Prop 2 and 1/2, you think we're the only state that, that's run like that? No. So.
Right, all right, but we won't.
We went at it again, right, who knows?
So, we've had a friendly discussion, we've, we've heard the radios, we'll take it under advisement, we're going to, we're going to discuss this again amongst ourselves, and we'll decide, and we will get back to, to go back to one of your other points, and I agree 100%. The, the fire department, the selectmen, I've said it with you alone, I'll say it again in front of the board and the town and everything, come in monthly, the more we talk, the more we have the conversation, the better we understand you, the better you understand us, and I think things will run smoother. And I've said that, you know, I'll kill you with kindness, and you kill me with kindness, and we're all going to be good. So, sorry.[1541.32] Oh, go ahead.
And just like-
I thought you were going to yell at me.
Well, yeah, I'll wait, I'll have to. Maybe when you, when you come in again, if you're going to do, come in once a month, if the board agrees, maybe a breakdown of the calls for the month. The amount of firefighters on the calls. You've got a new computer system now?
Well, I think, we already do that, that goes on our Facebook.
Yeah, we don't see, we, we don't-
But the rest of the town knows what we're doing.
A printout, a printout so that the board of selectmen can sit down, look at it on here. For those that, for those of us that don't have time to go on to Facebook, that have other things to do, a printout every month of the amount of calls, the type of calls, and the number of firefighters on each call.
Easily done.
Okay.
Well, what I started this whole session with tonight was, we need to agree what you want me to tell you every month. Okay? Tell me what you're interested in, and I'll come to you with that information. I'm happy to update you. We can develop a report card, a scorecard, anything you want. Am I red, yellow, green? I'll do it any way you want it. Okay?
I think every time you come in, and all the time we talk, I think it's all going to come out, you know, what we need, but-
Yeah, but I, we should standardize things so that I can, you know, sort of there's some continuity across meetings, that I don't come in and talk about, you know, this thing this time, and come in next time and talk about something totally different. We should have, I should take you through the list-
Like an operational summary, we had so many calls, so many guys went, oh, this broke, that broke.
I can, I can work on that.
That's easy.
But I've asked the board if there's certain things you want me to tell you. Because here's what happened a couple of weeks ago. Okay? For those at home watching. The ratings are through the roof, you guys are doing a great job. You could smile at that. People actually are watching this. Going over my budget, it's like, look at this, he hasn't spent any money yet. He's mismanaging his budget. He's awful, he's high here, he's low here. If you think this budget is linear spent, okay, it's not. Nowhere is near. You're going to see, you know, next month, you're going to, what the heck did he do? We had a meeting, and he went and, you know, pulled a lever and emptied his budget. No. Trucks, my trucks all get preventive maintenance in May. I just had the SCBA's done it with three grand. Things are scheduled. My hose testing's in May, another three or four grand. It's all scheduled. Okay? So the money will all go away, I'm underfunded as it is. Okay? And at the end, I'll decide what equipment I can buy with the balance of what I got left. That's how Chief Clement and the engineers did it, it's the safest way to do it. If I spend it all early, guess what?
You won't have money to operate.
Then I'm going to be in here crying, thinking, say, I ran out of money. Then you'd say, chief, you didn't manage the budget right. So the approach is, you know, everything that's required, and every time we make a purchase, or every time we do something, we think, we're thinking downstream. Okay? Do we really need it? Can I postpone it? What's, you know, is it, we buy very little nice-to-have. We buy everything needed to have. We don't have any nice-to-have over there. And the association's been great about buying stuff that, you know, they bought you a washing machine for six grand, they bought you a dryer for six grand. They buy computers, they buy furniture. They buy all kinds of stuff. Okay? That you never even get asked about buying. I'm underfunded, they recognize it, we're doing the best we can.
All right, well, I don't want to cut you short, but Deb, do you want to go through this budget quickly with us?
I would, I'd be happy to go through it, I mean, I, you know, discretionary is, what? Everything else there is, I land right on that number, I know what goes into that number.
The, I don't know if anyone wants to talk anymore. I know we, we have a salary with you, which we can't really do on, you know, right now, it's not the time or place. I've asked to try and get that taken care of. Moving down the line, is there any numbers that anyone wants to talk to the chief while we've got them here, that they want to pull out and talk to him about?
No, I'm just a little concerned about the requested amount for the firefighter wages. If you're moving at that clip of ten percent, ninety-eight thousand might not be enough.
Well-
So that adjustment you're making now is a good adjustment.
I called down to Florida, the software that I use is out of Florida. Okay? It's not real, it's great for reporting incidents. Okay? But when you want to run reports, it's not so great. I'm waiting for the new release of that system, and then I'll have, it'll have enhanced reporting capabilities. However, let me, let me tell you this. I called them again today, they were doing an analysis for me. I said, I want to know how much, how many dollars I'm spending against this two-hour minimum during these times. She was working on that, she's going to work on it. I think I reminded her that she hadn't sent it to me today, so. I'll have it in a few days. I'll know the dollars then, Joe. But I, but I think this is, we're probably looking at, if I had to guess, thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars. So a third of my budget is spent in that two-hour minimum. I want to take that and reinvest it against people that are out, you know, getting certified and trained, and then coming to calls. So I think that applies-
I think it's a great idea.
And I think, I think we can get a lot more out of it, instead of making, don't misunderstand me, the people that come during the day are incredibly important to what we do. But I got a handful of guys making a lot of money. Okay?
I want to mention something about the truck, I mean, I, I'm going to speak for myself, I'm in favor of the truck, because once we had to modify the method of buying it, and asking the townspeople through debt exclusion, and I put up those numbers when we were up there together, I think that's going to be, I'm expecting, and I'm going to be, I'm going to be pushing for a favorable result, that we get that truck. I think I'd made that very clear and public when we collaborated together, and quite frankly, the board made a mistake in approving money that, in a way that, you know, we shouldn't approve money that we didn't know where the heck it was going to come from. It was a mistake. And we now had to make that adjustment, which we did. We're going to float it on a warrant and ask people to buy it. And I put up the numbers, we'll do the math again probably on town meeting. And hopefully we'll get people to say yes.
Okay, go ahead, Ed.
I got a question that, that came up a month plus ago, that I found, I found unnecessary, was the PR guy. And I think that's something that, in my opinion, could be eliminated from your budget. Where does it, where does it show in your proposed budget for the coming year? And how much, how much are you proposing to pay the PR guy? And whereabouts is it listed here?
It's in the communications line item. It's a hundred and ninety-nine dollars a month.
I'm going to, I have something to say about that.
Okay, it's, it's a, I, I'm afraid what you all think it is. Okay? And I think we all recognize that he was here one night and made a terrible mistake in judgment. But if you think that's what I've purchased, he's not a hired gun. Okay? He's not any of that. He's a guy that delivers a legitimate service to me, to Georgetown, to Oxford, to West Newbury, to Merrimack, all over Massachusetts, this is what he does. I hired a professional. He hosts my website, handles all my social media. Okay? And does a great job at it. It's, it's, you know, I would say the single greatest benefit of my web presence is the fire prevention work we do. You know, we take a call, we push them, dispatch takes a call, guy looking for this, put them right on the website, and when he can read the code, he can get the form. That's where that's done. This is not a staffed fire department, people come and bang on the door looking to get a permit signed. We manage that through the internet. Open burning through the internet. Okay? In fact, I paid seven hundred and fifty dollars just for open burning, just for that piece of my website. And remember, to get a permit in this town is free. I proposed you should charge people ten bucks to at least recover some of the, some of the money. So we have three, four, five hundred people a year that burn, that you could have asked them for a ten-dollar donation towards our web presence, but anyhow, that's a different day. Eddie, twenty-four hundred bucks.
Well, I did, I did do the math. Yeah, I got another question. You did bring up, you did bring up a mention, and just looking here, how in the world does Merrimack do it with two full-time people and a budget that's only about seventy thousand more than what, than what we're paying here? They got two full, the chief, the chief and a lieutenant are full-time.
I don't know how they do it.
How in the world do they do it, and their budget isn't a heck of a lot more than what we're paying?
I'm not sure.
And they're doing an adequate job. And they're running ambulances.
I understand it. So some of that, like if you look at Georgetown's, for the outfits that are running an ambulance, you need to understand their entire operation and what they do with the revenues. I don't know that. The only thing I can tell you right now is I've authorized my EMS division to do a feasibility study on an ambulance. Georgetown's got four people in the station all day long. Doesn't cost them a nickel. Is it paying for it? So we're, we're looking at that. I currently think we're in a good spot. I mean, I, you know, maybe we should adopt the Merrimack plan.
All right, well, I'm going to, anyone-
I said because they pay their chief.
I got these guys waiting, and they've been waiting a little bit, so I'll have to move it pretty, go ahead.
You know, I work, you know, this board works really well together, but sometimes, you know, there is dissent among us. I think that the value that we get from the, from the public relations firm that you retain is phenomenal. And I see the work that he does, especially with the police department, and he has real strict standards on how he can portray either a crime in progress or a crime that has happened, and I've gone through your website, and I think it's value-added. So I, I wouldn't agree with that on the PR. I just admitted that the board made a mistake. It was a mistake with the use of the PR. Out of your control?
And I'll, no, no, no. I authorized him.
Okay, you did.
I fell on that sword, and I'll fall on it again. Okay? Don't take it out on him, he's very good at what he does.
I think we can get past that.
And I apologized to you all. But I don't think you, I don't think you want to take that away from me, because it means so much to the department, it means so much to the community.
And I went through his website and what he does for other cities and towns, and I agree, it's value-added, it's a professional, and it's great.
I'm sorry, we rebuilt the site in August, and, which I didn't pay him for. I haven't paid him this year.
Yeah, that's just my opinion.
But I was going to, I was going to, I'm sorry, that was a pause, so you could all think I haven't paid him this year. But our traffic since the rebuild in August, we've had twenty thousand visits to the website. We have a lot of unique lookups, Facebook, Twitter, mostly Groveland residents. I mean, it's, we have the analytics on the site, we know what it's doing. It's trackable, it's traceable, it's measurable, it's all that stuff. It's a great story for very little money, go ahead.
Do you have any more that you need to, you want to talk on this, anything on behalf of yourself or anything?
No, I spent a lot of time on just realigning some of this, it's not, you know, there's certain things that just repeat. They're recurring events for the fire department, they repeat, and they cost what they cost. I have to make decisions around certain things from time to time, and if I get caught and I got to go do this, then I don't get to do that.
Okay. And the last thing I want to ask, on your, on your salary end of it, I know we can't talk about it, do you have anything you want to say, or say to the board on behalf of your, or you'd rather not right now, or?
No, I would just encourage you to, well, to begin with, I've given you the benchmark around other communities. They're a lot like us, okay? And I think the chief's role is incredibly important, not because I'm in it, there's so much more I could do. Only scratching the surface on the ISO stuff. Jack Willett's going to tell you he's going to take you to the promised land, or? He already told me he was lowering the insurance rate. It's good, but there's so much more I could do, but, you know, not part-time. It just doesn't happen, it's a full-time job.
All right. Well, I don't need to cut you short, but-
No, no, no.
We spent a lot of time on it, and thank you for coming in, and I definitely think if, the more conversation we have back and forth, I think the better off we're going to be.
So who schedules me? Say a month out, and I'll send you a list of stuff I'll probably come back with.
You can send it to either near Denise and-
Well, you're going to be so darn busy because town meeting's coming up, you're not going to want to see me again.
Well, we're going to want to see you, because we're not going to have, we're going to make this all run smoothly, and that's what we're here for, so we're going to see you no matter what somehow. Whenever you want to meet, we're going to-
Say smooth again.
Smooth. All right, thanks for coming in, thanks guys for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, so we now have the water and sewer commissioners before us to discuss their budget. Sorry we're late. Sorry, Water Department.
That's okay, Chief expected a lot. I'm just going to hand some of these on. So I guess for the record, Tom Cusick, Superintendent for Groveland Water and Sewer. And we've submitted the FY seventeen budget to you. It's in a couple of different formats. I guess first I want to start off by saying, I tried to summarize, because there's a lot of information in there, both from an operational standpoint, day in, day out, to capital improvement, some water rate study stuff. So I tried to summarize that in the front mission statement that Denise requested. And I said it's in a couple of different formats. One would be a template that Denise actually has everybody doing, and then we have a couple of breakdowns, line item by line item, and then, so a comparison from FY sixteen to FY seventeen. Want to look at that a little bit, and then talk about some changes. It's not, quite honestly, there's really not a lot of change in the operations as far as percentage-wise from last year to this year. The biggest difference that you would probably be seeing would be if, in fact, we do some of the capital projects that we're proposing, it's about one point five million. And that really theoretically, if it's voted, because there'll be a warrant going into town meeting, you may not really see that bond payment increase until the previous, the next fiscal year. But I've been in conversation with Denise about that, and whether we need to cover some of that with a ban, a short-term note, before we actually borrow the whole thing. Before that, the whole payment comes in, let's do it.
While we're on that subject, when you talk about the capital, the, you know, the money, the one point, whatever it is, million to do the capital improvements, number one, we're going to have to obviously bond it.
Yes.
And that bond payment would come from probably, Denise is out sick, as everyone knows, but probably come from the general fund, or from your department.
Yeah.
So it'd become out of your rate structure. Okay? In, in the town, a lot of town people don't understand the water department as well. It's like we just had the discussion with the fire department. I'm trying to get people to understand. People think the water department is like the light department. Tons and tons of money, squirreled away, millions of dollars, and why don't we take some of that money and use it for infrastructure?
Oh, okay.
One reason I would like to have you guys, if you could tonight, briefly explain that, because I've gotten people every day say to me, we're talking about capital money, we're talking about borrowing money, why don't they use some of the millions they have squirreled away?
Yeah.
So if you could start with me on that one, that would help.
Yeah, I'll let Jim do that.
Can you tell me where the millions are stashed?
Yeah, they're definitely not stashed.
I knew that tank, I knew that tank was extra large.
It's important for everybody to know, there's an enterprise fund at the count. So, you know, everything is, we're not off the tax rate, we're totally off water and sewer fees. That's it.
So you all have one of these sheets? Yellow color here. From our reception of Enterprise, which was in 'oh-three. If you start at the bottom, it's kind of chronologically, but that's okay.
It's in here somewhere.
Know where it is in this package?
It should be on a single sheet.
No, I don't see it, not yet. I don't see it. I don't see it. I must be blind, but anyway, that's all right.
You want to share these?
Yeah, we'll share, Mike and I will share them.
Okay. We got one, go ahead.
Certified free cash sheet.
Yes, it's certified through DOR, through, through the state. So you can see at the bottom, it starts as, oh-three, which we retained forty-nine. Oh-four, one-seventy-six. And then oh-five, which was probably the rainy year that we had, we didn't do as well, so we lost eleven-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. And then if you go up to oh-seven, we had, I think what you have to understand, is you sell water, and it's a commodity-driven venture. So dry summers are very good for us. Wet, that's okay. So we had, we had a set and gauge our whole budget based on our worst-case conditions. So if you, if you go up to it, and you'll see it for each year, these are line item transfers probably at town hall. It was sixty thousand in 'oh-nine. It was two-hundred-and-thirteen in 'oh-four. There was three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars that went to the, to the tank. And then thirty thousand for the shortfall, a budget that year. There was the land acquisition for, to help with Billy Angelini's for a hundred thousand dollars. Twenty-five thousand dollars in 'oh-thirteen for speed drives for our front and our pressurized system. And then Governor's Road, eventually we're going with the DPW, that's going to take fifty thousand out of this budget, and fifty thousand out of the other. Now, it doesn't represent everything. A lot of that's been used in other parts of our budgets to fund specialty projects. It didn't require line item transfers. So you can see, you know, as of right now, our total amount of extra money that's in our, in our possession is really a hundred and nineteen thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars. So we take all that money, and we reinvest it back in, and we've done that consistently over the year.
So this year you'll be doing the Governor's Road with some of that money?
Yep, we're going to take half of it, we're hoping to take half out of one part of the budget, and half out of next year. Bobby's putting the drainage in, so at the same time, you know, we're all going to work together and hopefully get the pipe laid up through the, again, it saves the town more money, let's go out to bid.
So you don't have to put that, not that it even matters, you don't have to put that project up to bid, and you can save all the prevailing wage and all that by doing it in-house?
Yeah, me too, yep.
Yeah, one problem, one problem we've had is a couple of the local contractors in town have been keeping an eye on how we're hiring our contractors throughout the town, you guys probably already heard this, that we were doing the Pines project, and a lot of things ran over down there, and they got their eyes on how we're hiring contractors, paying them by the hour to run their equipment and all that, so as you move forward, just make sure we got eyes on these things.
And this, this is, this money is generated by what you sell your water at?
Again, and it's still a commodity, like I said, it's, we had a set it based, before we actually got here, and Bruce was still here, which was, he was a great asset. We kind of had to look at our worst-case condition, you know, wet as year, we're going to have the least amount of water that we pump and sell. And you have to set your budget based on your expenses and the rest of that, and that's, that's what we've done.
It's very modest, and there's no, there's no secret Swiss bank accounts.
There is none. If you find, look at our water rates, we are probably in the lower percentile of what we charge.
And therefore the one point five you need for capital-
It's going to impact the rates by about fifteen percent. It's going to move us slightly below the middle of the pack.
Yeah.
But that whole pack's moving right now, so we, every other town around us is actually, kind of spending money. Are we replacing fifty-oh-what, or fifty-oh-what?
And we're going to need to finance that otherwise, then therefore, by borrowing.
That's right.
In two stages, ban, banned anticipation notes, and then longer term.
This is probably the first year we didn't do a capital project. Every year we have actually done something of major concern. You know, we've done the lift station, we've done the well, well wells, did a variety of things that we have done to keep it up. And you have to be selective with what you do, worst-case scenarios, and making sure that you still stay, you know- And you have to be selective with what you do, worst-case scenarios, and making sure that you still stay, you know, cognizant with your water rates.
And, and unlike, uh, when we were talking with the Fire Chief, uh, this is not something we can kinda do piecemeal sort of here and there. We kinda have to, you gotta do it, you gotta do it.
We're gonna do from, uh, Washington Street to Gardner, Gardner to school.
So it's a five-year project?
No, no, well, but we're gonna bid it in two, in, uh, two pieces. So we're gonna, we're gonna bid one section, and we decided to keep it, the second one is an add alternate, see if we get better pricing, or if it's over budget, and then we have flexibility of what we're actually gonna do. Whether we're gonna do the whole thing, three quarters of it, and we can go from there.
And when do you think that will be going out?
Well, it has to get by town, town meeting, so...
It has to pay pass?
Yes, and we need you guys to support that for us. And then if it passes, um, we can start that in, in motion.
And again, when we, when we present that, we really need to let the town people understand how it's gonna be paid for. That's the biggest problem. And, and you know what Joe was saying a little, a little while ago about the ladder truck, I don't wanna go back, but the problem was is we were gonna always, we're gonna try and borrow that truck. And, and what happened was, it was just so costly that when we actually sat down and looked at it, we couldn't afford it. So we need to, as we put these projects forward, we really need to know, can we afford it? And put the mechanism together so we can afford it, and we can get it done, and we can sell it the right way. And that's what we need to do.
Yeah, we're gonna be, uh, like Perry, Perry, uh, Tanker Perry, uh, Perry Hill. It's not worth fixing. It's, it's gonna cost more money to fix it. It's, in the long run, that would be a bad decision to try to upgrade that tank. It needs to be replaced. But again, it's, it's large money that, uh, needs to be phased in slowly.
Right.
And continue on with the projects that we've, that we've done.
The, uh, the rate increase of fifteen percent, is that measured over a one-year or...
Um, it's, it's...
What, what, what do you, how do you think you might phase it in?
The first, it all, it depends upon what you borrow and what you bond. So, one-point-five is a significant increase. You know, as you chunk that money out, you'll see the difference in the, in the rate. There's a second project that's coming up, it's only a six percent part of the increase. But again, it depends upon what you pick to do and, and choose to do.
So in the course of the next couple of years, you know, people should be expecting potentially a twenty-five percent increase.
That'd be about the right number that we're looking at.
In, in our, whatever you're paying for your water now, if you don't, if you use the same amount.
That's right.
Pay twenty-five percent more. Over two or three a period.
And we, we try to conserve water, so the more you use, the more you pay. You know what I mean? We want people to conserve. Um, that's what we, that's what we're, we're about.
Yeah. Well, maybe we can open up, uh, swimming at Mill Pond again.
Alright, um...
That's good.
Mike, do you have any on set?
I'm good.
Okay. Alright, I, I will probably ask a couple of other quick questions. I don't know if you can answer them, or some of you guys can answer them?
Sure.
One of my, we, we had talked about this budget, we, we kinda went over a little bit. One of the questions that I had put a highlighter through, cause the board had discussed it, is the extra for the salary adjustments. It was sixty, sixty-two percent increase.
Sure.
Could you guys explain that?
Yep. The, um, if you look at... At the back of... There's a pay scale that we, that we pay our guys. Our operators, in the back of, um... I guess it's like, there's, there's some stuff there on my position, and then in the back of that, it says operator pay scale. It's like an Excel spreadsheet that has some averages. See this here? Looks like this, and then there's a sheet. It's all stapled together and it's got, got some pay scales with it and some information.
Says professional, professional summary and, uh, achievements.
Oh, it's towards the beginning.
There we go.
The back, the back sheet, you'll see it says operator pay scale.
Go ahead. I'll get through it. I'll listen till I find it. Got it. Operator pay scale.
I think it was at the beginning of the package. So within that pay scale, uh, uh, it's important to realize that there are three, there are three scales. And operators are, are paid on licensing, um, experience, um, and, and the amount of time, you know, and, um, and what they bring, quite frankly, to the table to, to do the, and perform the job. So the difference that you're seeing that sixty-seven percent... The reason why that jumps right out at you with the sixty-two percent is because it's compared to a new operator that came in at a much lower pay scale than an operator that left. So we had turnover. We had a guy leave for a job advancement. He was in the middle of the scale. We had one guy come in at the bottom of the scale. So that's why that number grew from last year to this year.
That's, so it's an eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifteen-dollar increase?
It's really not an increase.
It's a negative, actually.
It's what's left over because we're paying somebody less than...
We're paying somebody less money, so...
It's a decrease, not an increase, right?
Yeah, if you look at, if you look at the bottom line...
I'm only reading amount of increase, that's where I go.
I know, that's why I said, it's, you know, we broke it down in a couple of different ways. If you, if you look at, if you look at it line by line, we've only raised our, our operating budget for funding operators two percent.
Yeah. Alright, I got it.
And then our overall budget for sewer is two percent increase, and water is a point-oh-one percent increase. So again, that's numbers back, back into the, we were concerned when we saw that for the first time.
Yeah, yeah, I think, that's, that's how we, we all, that night, we all kinda...
Yeah, I mean, if you look at, if you, it's just money that drops down into that line.
Does anyone have anything else?
Can you explain, uh, on both the, uh, on the superintendent's salary increase request? On the water side at six percent and the, uh, sewer side at four percent, while, uh, the proposed for, uh, all town employees been two percent? And you got a, you got an increase, the superintendent got an increase last year, which was, uh, watered a town meeting that was more than what any other town employee's got. Percentage increase. Can you explain the request for the increase of, uh, like forty, four-thousand-eight-hundred dollars between both?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it was a typo. It's only supposed to be four percent, but I'll, I'll let Jim.
Four percent, it says four percent on wa, on sewer, six percent on water.
Yeah, I think it was a typo.
Yeah, it is a typo. It's, it's actually, it's actually total four percent.
Total four.
No, we're gonna get two.
Two and two.
Two and two.
Exactly, so it's two percent more, so it's really not four, it's, it's two, but, um, it's part of, you're right, Ed. Last year we did the same thing at town meeting. Guys didn't support it, but they got through town meeting nonetheless. This is the, uh, last part of what we promised Tom that we would do. We wanna get him to a scale that we feel is fair, equitable, and, and is reasonable for what Tom brings to the table. And what he has brought to the table is, uh, and like I said, this is the first year we have not done a construction project of any size. Tom has been involved with a, a lot of it, the sewer line to, um, Pawtucket to the lift station, we took that over. We dragged a twelve-inch water main from Nickel's Trust onto a school for fire, well, for fire suppression and anything else. It was our biggest, one of our biggest loads, and there's no water down there from West New Breeze Side and never will be. And we actually kinda really feed the high school now. So, um, there, there was, you know, two-hundred, uh, two-thousand feet of eight-inch water main going to the back of the school that we worked with, uh, the highway department, um, a new lift station that we were involved with. We put a brand-new scanner system in, so we know at any given time where we pump water, how much water we pump on a daily basis, so we can average that out. We have to have that for reporting to DEP, which Tom does on, on a daily basis. We, we have the main sewer station, um, which, well, our sewer, in case you don't know, goes from there to, to Hayville. I'm getting there, Ed, I'm gonna tell you why I did it. You know, he was involved, actively involved in the, um, uh, Angelini property with requiring that and helping getting through that, and then the Hayville landfill cap. We have a tremendous amount of projects that we just, that we just talked about. There's gonna be twenty-five percent increase of our rates. We'd like to do another tank, we'd like to do more water mains. We got a water main on King Street that's been, Tom knows the town, Tom's very experienced at this point. We felt it was necessary to give him two percent, bring him in line with most people in, in, um, Tom's, uh, position around this area. And we'd like you guys to support that.
Just a, I, I, I'm, I'm looking at this sheet right here.
I don't have that sheet.
Wanna take a look at it?
Sure.
And the, uh, superintendent's salary based upon, uh, th, this is water side. It is proposed increase of, of six percent, not the four percent.
It's, it's not right. I, I don't know who...
What isn't right? If, if, if you take sixty-three thousand, uh... Yeah, right here. This is...
I didn't do that sheet. That's not part of it. If you go back to what our budget is, Ed, for water, and you look at it, it's line by line, it's exactly what it is. It's exactly what the A three says.
Ninety-three-six.
It is two percent that we're gonna give him, that everybody got, and an additional two percent on top. If you look at the budget, that's what it is.
Ninety-one?
We're not hiding anything.
It's ninety-three and six.
That's right.
Ninety-three and six versus ninety-one and eight.
Correct.
At two percent.
You're absolutely correct. I, I didn't generate these. These came from, uh, we're different source, so I'm not that privy with them. I saw the sixty-two percent, probably the first day you saw sixty-two percent. I was very concerned when I saw it.
Is, is this, is this the one you're referring to right here?
I'm referring to what you're referring to.
This the one you're referring to?
Yeah, the water, so what's gonna be actually proposed on the warrant. That's our budget.
Help me out here, because this looks like a three-point-eight percent increase on, on the water side. And a three-point-eight percent increase on the...
It's four percent, three fifths. Three-point-eight, four percent. That's what it is.
My question is, and I think I just answered it anyway, I was gonna ask, compared, Groveland compared to other superintendents in the area, I mean, that just answered my question anyway.
It is. And I understand, I understand. I, I understand it doesn't look good, you know, we are Enterprise, but, you know, we have a lot of work we need to get done. Tom's, he's, he's young, he's experienced, he's grown a lot while he's here. He's gonna continue to grow. I'm gonna be certainly long gone while Tom's still the, uh, superintendent of Groveland Water and Sewer. And, uh, we'd like to carry on, and I, I think it's a good fit. I think it's a good bang for your buck. I do. I, I hope you support it. I understand if you don't, but, uh, that's what we feel.
Yeah, just, just my opinion, there's a couple of points in the budget where, you know, we might, it, it might happen that this Board of Selectmen is gonna have a budget that's different from what the Finance Committee has. And this would be one area that I would advocate.
And, and, um, cause Denise isn't here, and the contractual people in town get a two percent raise on contractual people. And I've been a big pusher for, I believe the non-contractual people should be getting a two percent increase as well. I've been a, a, an advocate, why should one get one, the other shouldn't? This two percent we're talking about isn't over and above the two percent that normally get in. It's, it's in line with everyone else. Am I correct or am I not correct?
You're not correct.
You're not correct.
Next one, two.
Four.
Are you correct?
Going back to Ed's point.
It's two percent over the two percent.
Okay, so I'm going back to...
A total of four percent increase. Total, if you look at it that way.
I'm backing in backwards here on Ed's point. And I think Ed, Ed was correct kinda, he was saying four, but it is really four. He's looking at four too.
I agree with him, it was four.
Okay.
One of them happens to say three-point-eight, it's four percent.
Exactly.
It's just what it is.
Okay. Alright, so we'll have that, we'll still have that conversation amongst ourselves. I don't wanna hold anyone up.
Yeah, no.
Anyone else?
We'd like you to seriously consider it. It's, it's something that's important to us, uh, for sure. We, we, we believe that, where we wouldn't be here, you know, knocking on down and saying, "I would support this." I got the task to do that, so, uh, I'm asking you. Very nice.
And I appreciate it. Uh, does anyone else have anything for those tomorrow, sewer?
Well done, and thanks to you.
Thank you, everyone for coming in. Appreciate it.
Oh, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Again, we'd like to, uh, not much different than what we hear the Fire Chief talk about, but we'd also like to spend more time...
Definitely, I think, I think we definitely should.
I think, uh, we...
I know they, I know that the Finance Board was gonna stop meeting people, but I think it's important that we meet people. That's why I've been trying to get people to come in and talk amongst us, and we, we know what you're doing, we know what you're planning, we know what the superintendent needs. I mean, we had that whole issue with the Pines outback, and I've been, I've been following it, and I know he's been actively working on it. I think that's all good stuff. I've, I've been a big, uh, big active on the, uh, the new permitting book in the town. I wanted that book, we finally got it done. I think it's important. I think if we all talk and we work as a team, it's gonna run smoothly. And I don't think in the past, um, it, it, we could've done it a little bit more, so...
I, I just have one more pitch, though. The electric light company, if they, if they move out, is certainly very interested in that building.
Well, it's, I'm glad you mentioned it, because, um, I've been through the building.
Yeah.
I went through it with the house, the housing people.
Yeah.
They don't want it. I actually think it's a, a, a good fit for you guys, and I personally will push for it, cause I think it's a perfect fit. I, we need more room here in Town Hall. Uh, it's gonna help us open up more room here. So I'm, I'm gonna push hard for that. I can tell you personally, I can't speak to my board members, but I will personally push for that.
That would be, it'd be a perfect fit for us.
It's a perfect fit, and that you have the room, you can put the trucks indoors. I mean, the place right now, you guys over there is a dungeon.
It is.
It's not, it's mold. I mean, I've been in that building as well. I don't believe they'd still work there. But, I mean, I know they're not gonna be out of that building until January, maybe late January, but, um, keep working with us.
And I think, and actually, and I actually, I actually think we can actually work that into our budget and, you know, rehab that to our needs within our budget.
I don't think it needs major rehab either. I think it needs, it's gonna need...
It needs a few tweaks.
No.
It needs a few tweaks.
Yeah, but I don't think it's any major. It's not hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Oh, God, no, no, no.
You can take down any wall in that place, right?
I'm sorry?
You can take down any wall.
I, I don't know that to be the case yet. Tom may know that.
I, I've looked at it, and it's, it's, there's not a lot that we need to do. Because it's set up for utility, it's perfect for us. Right now, we're two locations. My, my personnel is someplace else, and I'm over here. The efficiency is just...
It's great.
To make it better.
Great find.
And having that is just, would just, it is a great fit.
And the only thing why I have you here, and I know Denise isn't here, and I know we're gonna, of course, I, I shouldn't talk about it, but, um, we're gonna have to have that discussion when it comes, you know, it's town-owned land, maybe not the town-owned building. I guess there's some talk about who owns what, but at any rate, um, at one point in time, we're gonna have to talk about conversation back and forth. So we can have that conversation and, and just be open-minded when we have the conversation.
I am, but I need you to be as well, cause we gave you guys the, um, the Selectmen, not the, the Pryor Board. Zone one aquifer, we put the solar fields.
Yeah.
You're gonna generate five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars on that contract that we gave you land and helped get through legislation.
We've already collected a hundred and change.
So again...
And I, I really don't wanna raise my rates to pay you guys rent, if that's what you're thinking, but, you know, I'm just, I'm just open dialogue.
Let's have that, let's have the conversation.
Sure, absolutely.
Make sure the town people understand that, what you just told me.
Absolutely.
You know, that's what we need to know, and that's the conversation we should be having.
I appreciate that.
And, and what will happen is when that conversation happens, people are gonna understand it, and we're gonna be fine. You know what I mean? And I, I, again, I can't say enough. I think it's a perfect fit for you guys. I think that it will be good, um, and hopefully we can work that out.
Yeah, sure.
Anyone got anything else?
Yeah, just, the solar company paid one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars for the man...
For the manning the property as well.
And then we've collected twenty-two, and twenty-two, and twenty-three, and...
It escalates all the way up for twenty years.
And when you're done, we'll collect, uh, in the year twenty-thirty-three, that's the year you're gonna retire, five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand.
It was actually the first time it's ever been done in a zone-one aquifer.
That's unbelievable.
So we were the first to do it.
That's, that's great. Thank you for that.
It was, it was monumental. Actually, I can take Mike from Electric Company, he's a very, you know, important part of that.
That's a big win for us.
Well, thank you, everyone, for coming in. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time. Sorry it was so late getting you in.
Well done.
I'll see, seeing how you don't drive anymore at night, do you, do you need a ride?
Yes.
Well, he has a driver out there. You got a Crown Victoria out there.
I'll see you later.
Okay, so moving down the list, here, um, back on schedule, anyone have anything on the old business?
I think it's old business. Let me think. No, no, it's not. It's new business. Never mind. I have to wait for new business.
Ed, you all good?
Uh, I'm, I'm good.
Mike, you good?
Good for old business, yep.
Alright, so moving down, um, we have correspondence, the minutes from the February twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, um, meeting. We have the executive session minutes from February twenty-second, two thousand sixteen. We read them and we'll, you guys can take care of it while I'm out here. So I know Denise is out sick, she's not feeling good. I did talk to her on the phone, and, uh, she really, really sounded sick. And, um, I worked with Cassandra today, and Cassandra did a great job getting all our paperwork together for us in a short period of time, and looks like everything ran smoothly so far, so thank you for doing what you're doing, stepping up to the plate. And I know you and Denise talked on the phone today, and she wanted to have you say some words.
Yes, um, let's see. The cemetery commissioners would like to ask relatives that have placed any Christmas decorations on lots to have them removed by April first. All items left after that will be removed. Also, the cemetery is going to start tagging unsightly shrubs that have overgrown or, are in poor health. This will commence on May first, and if a shrub is tagged, it will be removed. This will commence on May first, and if a shrub is tagged, it will be removed. They are giving people thirty days from the day the shrub is tagged to contact us with their concerns or intentions. They can contact Frank at the cemetery or a commissioner if there are any issues. Um, Bill, we talked about this a little bit earlier. Update on annual town election. So, there's boards and committees that have vacancies, and you want me to go down the list?
Yeah, if you don't mind. So, yeah, because we have the upcoming election in May, so we have some open seats there. We have a lot of committee seats and, and stuff that's open, so Cassandra worked with me today to come up with a list. So, go ahead and read out what we got.
Okay, um, to start, people have until Thursday, this Thursday, so what's that, the tenth?
Yes.
To take papers out to run, and then they need to be returned by Monday, March fourteenth, at five P M. to town clerk. Um, so the boards that have vacancies are, Board of Assessors, there's a three-year term. Board of Health, three-year term. Board of Selectmen, one-year term. Cemetery Board, one-year term. Um, the Light Department. The library has many vacancies available. Planning Board has one five-year and one one-year term. Water and Sewer Department, moderator, school committee, town clerk, road commissioner, and tree warden. So, all those boards and committees are available, have spots available.
Alright, awesome.
And some people have taken out papers for some of those.
Correct. And the last date of register to vote for the town election is April twelfth.
Okay.
And the last thing Denise wanted to mention was, there is a planning board public hearing on the proposed Z B A changes on March twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, at eight P M.
And that's on the, all the work we've been doing over the years with the bylaws and all that.
At eight P M?
Uh huh.
What is it, late?
So late.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Maybe we could let people get out of work with them?
I don't remember the Z B A meeting that late. Wasn't it seven, seven thirty?
Seven, seven thirty.
No, this is for the plan. It would be, they start at seven thirty usually. Okay, so we all set?
Maybe they're starting the meeting at seven or seven thirty and then going to be on that at eight.
Then the public hearings at eight. Okay, I get it. Alright, so you good with everything?
Yes.
Finance time? Okay. So, moving down to selectmen's time. I kinda put this off for a couple of weeks in a row. Number one, the Bagno School project, we're still working on it, and it's coming up to the point of being bidding out the well. We're waiting still for the superintendent and the principal and the summer program director, me and Denise, to get together. We just all can't seem to get together, but I think Denise is working on a time. When I get back from vacation, we're gonna meet first, the first part of April. The project couldn't be started anyway until school gets out because of traffic for the kids and what happened, so I think we'll be able to keep it on schedule and, and get it done on time. The Pines project, as far as the boat ramp goes, is gonna be postponed. It, it's, as of right now, it looks like it's gonna be postponed because the planks, the construction of the planks, they're still not done, and they still haven't been delivered, and I believe we're gonna miss the sturgeon, so we're not gonna be able to get the project done.
Weren't they, weren't they ordered in October and November?
Yeah, they had to be built, and, and they, they weren't built, haven't got them built in time. They haven't been delivered, so we're not gonna be able to get the construction part of it done in time for the sturgeon. So, that looks like that project will be put off until next year.
Did they give a reason why they weren't built?
Nope. I, I didn't ask. I should've probably, but I didn't ask the positions.
If we ordered them, did we pay for them and they didn't get?
I don't, you don't pay for them until they're delivered, I believe, thirty days afterwards. And then Tracy's over there. I don't know if you can hear me. Tracy, the veto room? The veto room? Any, anything on the veto room as far as?
I, I don't know if he was working directly with Denise on that.
Okay. I don't, I don't know the update, so I was just.
I'll have to check with Denise.
Okay. Alright, and the other, last thing I had is, I would ask the board kindly if, when I leave, I'll be gone on vacation, that we would have, hopefully we'd have the vice chair run the meeting. If, I would think that's next in command unless you guys all amongst yourselves decide you wanna have someone else do it.
Well, I was gonna talk about that, Tom. I agree.
Hey, Joe?
Alright, so two things. In your absence, of course, we wanna support Ed, and Ed will be responsible for setting the agenda with the help of Denise. So, Ed, if you need, you know, some support, call on any of us, I'm sure. One thing I would like to ask the board, and Ed, and you, Bill, is to put on the agenda during your absence a very important agenda item, and that is using potentially technology to do secret balloting at town meeting. I think that this board has been a really strong advocate board for reforming government and processes. I think by virtue of the town agreeing by a pretty sizable vote at a five-member board was an important part of the evolution of our government going forward. I think the very next piece that we need to consider as a town is that there should be secret voting at town meeting. I've heard from many constituents that they have concerns about voting on a matter at town meeting that goes contrary to a friend or a neighbor. Some people have used the R-word retaliation or fear of it or reprisals, and I think in the modern era, we should, at town meeting, give everyone an opportunity to vote their conscience, and I think participation at town meeting will be dramatically increased if people can vote quietly and privately. Now, I'm doing a little bit of research. There is some technology that's available so that when people arrive at town meeting, they'll give, be given a little electronic device that's got two buttons on it, nay or yay. So, you can vote on all matters. The device will electronically transmit to a central processing device that will tabulate the, the votes, and I think that this is not only the future of Groveland, but I think we should put it on for this year. So, I'd like to have that opportunity to complete my research and present it at the very next meeting if possible.
Joe, can I ask a question? Granted, that's a great idea. No problem at all. And again, I was only involved in a hundred-home camp in Maine where we did the same idea, but we did it by paper ballot. So, let's just say we're voting on putting a new dock in. We'd have dock at the top, no, yes, and we'd throw it through. We had a, we had a machine, but the problem was, is we had to wait for everyone to sit in and count all the.
It's gonna extend the meeting forever.
So, what Joe's talking about is quicker, push the button, done.
Instantaneous, yeah.
Do you think it would cost a lot of money to buy that stuff, or could we borrow from another town?
Or could you put an app on a phone to do it?
I have to find out. I gotta, I gotta check.
Well, I don't have a problem in, Cassandra.
I've asked Denise to look into some of it.
Yeah, no.
She can legitimately do it, like, from an app on a phone that everybody has.
She's familiar with. I use a flip phone. I'm not voting that night.
You have to put your hand up.
I have another device at work, but I can use that, so.
If you wanna set that for an agenda item now, I think Ed has something he wants to say, but I think tonight would be the night we need to do that.
Okay.
So, and I, when I'm away, it doesn't matter, but I, I think Joe's right sooner than later, but anyway, go ahead.
No, it was, it was, I don't know much to say about it. It was a good suggestion.
Right.
And I, I agree with most everything he said, but, I've heard the same thing.
Right. I agree.
And I, rather than, rather than a paper ballot, if, if you're gonna do every, every item.
Yeah, those meetings.
Paper ballot would be.
Yeah, those meetings are long again. Now, they're really gonna be, now they're gonna go on to the next morning.
And, and I agree with what you said, Joe. I think a lot of people don't go to the town meeting for that reason. I think a lot of people don't wanna have to raise their hand, and I think a lot of times counting, so I've seen counting sometimes, like, oh, no, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's, it's, that's old, and I think we are in a different technology time, and I agree with Joe.
Like, I do hear people say, what's the sense in going? It's already been decided.
Right, right, exactly.
And, you know, neighbors get pitted against neighbors, and, you know, it's a human nature, is what it is. It's a small town. A few hundred people show up, and you're gonna make somebody angry, or you're gonna worry about your job, or intimidation.
Nope.
We're gonna kill that.
Right.
So, do we need to, do we need to give Joe the, Joe the, the go-ahead to keep researching that?
And then you.
He can research it, and then Cassandra will have that put on for our next, next meeting.
And then Ed, Ed, or you, or Ed will approve that to be an agenda item at some point.
True.
Do you wanna prove it now, or do you wanna prove it when I'm gone?
No, whenever, whenever.
I'd rather do it, not that I'm saying.
Ed wouldn't do it.
I'm just saying, I think we're both, everyone's in agreement.
Yeah.
I wanna get it done now to get it on sooner than later.
I'd like to do it for this year.
Yeah, if not the next meeting, then the meeting afterwards would be.
Do you think you'll have time to get it done by the next meeting, Joe?
I'll have it done by this week.
Put it on.
And, and actually, you could almost entitle it an, an update on.
Yeah, even if we, let's say the next meeting, I'm, I haven't done all the research, or it's too darn expensive. We can still vote conceptually to say that's what we want.
The idea's good.
And take a few weeks to figure out how we're gonna do it. Maybe the first year, we might have to do paper ballot, maybe.
Yeah.
You know?
But, I mean, maybe we could do it to another town.
Huh?
Maybe another town, if they had it, we could borrow theirs. I mean, if it.
Who knows, yeah.
You don't know.
Yeah.
Well, also, just, I'm encouraged just to follow up with the town council and have him weigh in on what his recommendations for going forward with it. Does it, does it take a, a vote before the town meeting to go, every, every article to a secret ballot? Or does it need to be, does it need to be each article, as it's brought up, go to a, a secret ballot?
Um, I don't know.
Google search on it.
I have no idea.
It's probably.
No, no, maybe we, maybe we should get a, you know, a discussion with him.
We should. One of the things that's really dangerous if we decide to cherry pick one or two issues and say, let's just secret ballot them.
We do, we do.
Yeah, it's gotta be all or nothing.
All or nothing, I agree.
We, we, we do, we do private, it's a secret, secret is a, secret is a harsh word. If we do private balloting, private, private voting, just like when you go, last week, we all, you know, got behind, you know, a little cubby hole, and nobody saw what we did. If we do private voting at town meetings starting this year, we'll either do it by paper or a device, whichever way is available. Once the board says, let's go with it, it's our decision.
Well, I think, I think you missed, missed what I was saying. What I meant was a ruling from the town council, do we need to take a vote before the town meeting starts, or just as it starts?
Oh, I see.
To do every article, or does, do we have to, as the article comes up, do we have to present it, that it be presented as a secret ballot?
We should ask town council, but I've got a resource that'll help me with some of that, too, so. I'll, I'll do as much research as I can. I'll have it wrapped up by next week.
Okay.
At least as much as I can produce for information.
Alright. So, do we have anyone else?
Well, thank you for your support. It sounds like the consensus of the board is to support the idea, so now I'll get serious and get some homework done for the next meeting.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything under selectmen's time?
I'm good.
I think I'm good on that.
Okay. The only other one thing I had is I was talking with Denise and Bob, the road commissioner, and Route ninety-seven project is going to be started sometime, probably the first, the middle of April, the reconstruction project. So, that's been done. Bob has gone to the pre-bid conference, and I know they're getting ready to get set up to get started, so you'll be seeing, people in town will be seeing that project get started. And we'll end up with wider sidewalks and a much better road, so that will be moving forward soon.
Well, just a point of information. We have this week the Mass Municipal Association.
Friday morning.
Friday here, here at the town hall. You're gonna be aware.
I'll be in Florida. No, I'll be in probably Virginia by then, but I won't be.
It's eight A M. to ten, um, ten.
Eight to ten, yep.
Ten A M., yep.
Alright, so that's good, and I think that's it. Someone wanna make a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Alright.
Seconded.
Seconded, and all in favor?
Yep.
So, we're gonna close the meeting at, what's that, six thirty-four?
It looks like eight.